Good evening, I'd like to call the Lancaster Central School District School Board Meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to fly?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To reply to the flag of the United States of America and to your honor for which it stands, one nation under God, neither is law or liberty in our midst.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to 4.0, we have two presentations for this evening. 4.1 is the Model UN recognition with Mrs. Pantera. And then 4.2 will be Erie Community College Tech Awards Recognition with Mr. Gembar. So for those presentations, we're going to move to the gymnasium, which is just across the way. And then after the presentations, we'll come back in for the meeting. So, everyone's welcome to join us, right? We have enough room, okay?
For this evening is the recognition of the Model UN.
That was my author, Jacob Danzian. Yeah, we have our want to come to this because our public sphere is very big. We expected a competitive club with tools all around us from New York and Pennsylvania. They are a moth of United Nations. So this is deal with multiple crises and world issues. So Jacob Danzian are going to tell you a little bit about Model UN and then our presentation.
Hello, I'm Jacob, I'm the president of Model United Nations.
And I am Daniel Scaglia, and I am the vice president.
So Model UN do a lot of things, but so we start off, we start by researching. We give a number of topics and we have to research our country's political opinion on that. Whether it be our for like intervention in Chicago or against it, something like that. Then after that, we travel to different colleges all over the place. And then once we're there, we bait and come to a resolution with other countries that are there.
And so kind of what we learned, obviously public speaking is huge. We go through a room of thirty, forty strangers that we don't know anything about. And we have to act like our country's open, like some African country, we have to research that. And then we have to be comfortable enough so we can stand up and defend our values and stuff like that. And that's really, it helps you build a sense of confidence in yourself that you can go in front of people and you know what you're talking about. You obviously have a big sense of camaraderie within the club. Obviously, all of us from Lancaster are pretty close friends. But then when we do go to these conferences, we meet a lot of people and we still talk to I know that I personally will talk to a few people today because we just have so much fun and it's so much.
Going up what Dan said about becoming a leader. This club has really helped me branch out and become a lot more comfortable with public speaking like right now. And yeah, it's helped me become a much better, more well-rounded person.
And we also definitely learned how to compromise and how to respect other values and beliefs. Because especially if we're in different countries like the United States, as opposed to Islamic Nation, there's very different beliefs there and we have to all work together to come to a general consensus. And we all respect each other's opinions in a way that no one else understands. It's all respectful, but.
So we would like to recognize some of the accomplished persons, young people that have earned. In the Kinesia's College, we're the best delegation with a team of Irene, Andy, and Jen and Lori. And then State Bonaventure University in medals of excellence goes to the team of Jacob Danzian and Jen and Scaglia. And also to the team of Irene, Andy, David Paul, and Davis. And next to Bonaventure also honorable mention honors goes to the team of Brandon Habsai and Jared Henson. And now also to the team of Simon Hotlock and Samuel.
Come on, I think Silver and Russian for support of Model UN. We brought to Kinesia's College, State Bonaventure, and next year we're going to add Cornell University to our slate of competitions that we will be. That will be our hardest one, it's a five-day conference. And the students go pretty much from eight in the morning until about eleven o'clock at night. So it's very intense and it'll be one that will enlist these students from around the world. We've got it before.
And next I'd like to introduce Mr. Gembar.
Good evening, I'd like to go and the students I've been working with, the Science Olympia and Lancaster Middle School. They've worked through a lot of tough competitions, science media competitions, physics Olympic competitions, the tech awards, which we're going to discuss here in a moment. They've been working very hard throughout the year, not only as a team, but also with some of their other team members in different competitions. This couldn't happen without the support all of these individuals, which we definitely appreciate. Means a lot, they have to go out and work at Lancaster and that these students are rocking time enough to do such a good job. At this time, well, actually, sorry. The competition that the young gentlemen are being recognized for is tech awards, which is put on by the West New York Technology Teachers Association in conjunction with some individuals that I'm going to introduce here in a moment from the Parents for Children, Keybank, along with some other engineering firms that really donate a lot of time and effort along with funds along with, I mean, really goes to show how great a community we are in. But this tech awards competition, we had anything from lighter cars, airplanes, to robotics. And a former private leading way student at the middle school high school competed in. And these gentlemen, Jason, I'm going to introduce him in a moment. They competed in a healthy known as the Brain Challenge, a root goal for a competition, taking something very simple and making it very complex. It was kind of unique to see them do something like that. And their end goal, they had to go and capture a mouse, kind of the old mousetrap game. Most of us remember the simple mousetrap game. They had to make it very complex and make it this competition where that contraption lasts almost sixty seconds. And they did put a pretty good effort for it with all their trials and efforts to do it before. So I'm going to turn it over to Christine Carr here, right now. Come up, please. Irene is an eighth grader, she's worked with us in science media for the last two years.
Morning,早上.
Well, thank you everyone for being here tonight. I'm the director for an organization called Parents for Children. And yes, we were part of the staff board, although we ran individual competitions after by our agency, which was called the West New York Brain Challenge. So these went along with their instructor as well and our corporate partners, one of the Keybank, our corporate partner that comes up here. They're going to be having a laptop tonight, so they are sponsoring a company for the laptop. We also had a corporate mentor, wanted to meet the gentleman from Edwards Academy. We're in, this is a piece of time with kids, finding out a lot of experiential learning from the corporate side, how you buy engineering for school. And then we also have the National Director of Education, who actually we provided funding of affiliate events together, so along with all that relevant mentor to provide that platform. So we're going to come together and we're going to do some very cool mission.
Okay, so I'd like to thank both groups for doing a set-up presentation of all the wonderful things that our brilliant minds in Lancaster are doing. Those of you that are here just waiting for the rest of the very exciting morning will be heading back over to the boardroom. If you're here for just the presentations, thank you for coming. Enjoy the rest of it.
We're moving on to 5.0 correspondence, after those two very nice presentations by impressive students from Lancaster. 5.0 correspondence, did anyone receive anything addressed to the board? Or any correspondence figure to speak of? Okay, approval of minutes 6.0. 6.1, could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from June 5th?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Those opposed, so moved. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anything from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Yes, on behalf of the class, I would like to thank the major leaders of the university. We want to contribute that to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Marchioli. Anything from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association? Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? 8.0, it's board reports. 8.1, anyone from the board have anything they'd like to report on?
I do. I just have a couple of things. First of all, I attended the ESSA review with the commissioner on June 8th that I had told you guys about. Dr. Perini was there also. We were talking about it when we got here. There was a very heavy representation from the Buffalo school system and a very poor presentation from the suburban schools, which really shocked me. The people who spoke though were very prepared, very well-spoken, and had some very great, would you agree, you had great points. But the best part about it was the commissioner was there and we had the undivided attention of the Commissioner of Education for two and a half hours. But unfortunately, a lot of what was discussed really didn't apply to this district. There was representation, representative there that spoke a lot about physical education in our schools. They requested more formal language and the ESSA plan, that kind of thing. So there was like interest groups, shall we say, but at not one suburban school district, which I was very disappointed. And it ended early, so you had the commissioner come in and we didn't even use all her time. So I was surprised, it wasn't even a nice weather day or, you know, anything. So I was kind of shocked by that. But still good, I mean, she was wonderful, she listened, she, they were taking notes, it was all recorded. So hopefully some of those changes will be represented in the new plan. On Wednesday, June 6th, I attended the Academy of Finance Advisory Board. We, it was their last meeting of the year. We set up new dates for next year, new topics to discuss as of next year. The internship fairs and as well as events and fund registers were discussed. Which ones worked, which ones didn't, which ones they need to improve and which ones they're going to just continue doing. Very organized. They introduced the new student leaders and we said goodbye to some of our seniors, which was a pretty neat thing to see. The seniors though, who are attending local schools, were asked to get involved as mentors to future leaders. And they were all in, so I thought that was awesome because not going to cut the ties, yeah. So there's only a couple, most are going away to school, but the ones that are staying will be involved next year. And then we did some feedback in breakout groups, so with our community representative that was there. I just want to make note, and Dr. Valley may, and if I step on your toes, I'm sorry. But Mr. Dixon, the advisor for the Academy of Finance, was nominated this year for Teacher of the Year with the Chamber of Commerce. And they were there that morning as well to let him know. There was a luncheon held earlier this week. He, there was three of them, three Lancaster teachers. Mr. Dixon did not win, but he was highlighted. Mr. Santoro won for his work with the Trades Academy. Were you going to mention that? Okay. So Mr. Santoro did win the Teacher of the Year with the Chamber for his work with the Trades Academy. So I thought that was awesome. Ms. Ruda was also nominated and highlighted. So it's nice to see that the community is celebrating our teachers as well. And lastly for me, the NISBA Board Appreciation Reception is this Tuesday, next Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, the 27th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Statler. You probably received an email every other day from them. I will be there. It's a great opportunity to network and there's representatives from NISBA going to be there as well as your other, your other local board members. So I know it's a busy time of year for a lot of us, but if you can make that, it's a, it's a great opportunity. That's all for me.
So I have a, I just have a question. Now, do you think, I mean, I had intended to go, I had to work that evening, but and I'm sure a lot of people had similar excuses. And given the nature of the low attendance and what we're seeing from the state ed department right now, like the reduction of years in testing and what I, what I understand of Mrs. Elias, or Commissioner Elias, that she has the ear of teachers, I think. I think she has the ear of parents, especially her being from Buffalo and having been steeped in public education for decades. I think we're on good footing or much better footing than we were. Do you think that had a little something to do with the lack of attendance? I mean, I see your point entirely and I, again, I thank you for representing us as well as you do and bringing back the information that you do. But I was just wondering your take on that, because I'm hoping that is the case. Those informational sessions, especially with her, I do like to attend and I'll, in the future, try to attend those. But what do you think?
Well, you're right. I think part of the issue is she gives us other outlets. You can write, you can write your comments in, you can go on the website and make your comments, you can obviously speak there. So she's, it was more than one avenue and she's done it more than one appearance. So I'm not really sure why Buffalo was, I was shocked by, I was telling Marie earlier, I was absolutely shocked by the representation they had, but I'm not sure. Maybe, maybe the other avenue is prevented or, you know, had, was the reason for the late representation. But it was very interesting to see and listen to what other districts are going through and what they're fighting for. And they did discuss testing a little bit, they did discuss mostly like funding and suspension rates and parent involvement, a lot of those things that we don't necessarily have an issue with. Attendance, that kind of thing. But it was, it was great and anytime I can see her, and I do, because I like to get the information right from her. And she's wonderful, she's very pro teacher, she's very pro, pro public education and she listens. That's the most important thing I respect about her, she takes the time to listen to us common folk, you know, those of us on the front line. She takes the time to listen and not just pacify you listen, she really listens. So I'd like that, I have a lot of respect for her and she's, she's doing great things.
Thank you, Mrs. Christopher. Anyone else from the board? Okay, well, I attended the last meeting, Mr. Gallagher, thank you for taking over for me. I attended the Lancaster Senior Recognition Night, which is always very enjoyable, especially since I have a senior this year, my son Patrick is graduating. Graduation is coming up this Friday, which I'm very excited about. But just to see the impressive individuals, one after the other, sharing in accolades and scholarships and recognition that is very well-deserved. And Mr. Marchioli, I'm glad you're here. What is that number of scholarship money that our seniors have earned this year?
Well, a little bit over seven million.
Seven million dollars. So again, quite impressive that our young people are going on to further their education in one, by one avenue or another, and that their, their hard work is paying off. So an enjoyable evening. What I'd like to do next, if no one else has any other board reports, is go through a review of our 2016-17 board goals and give some updates as to the progress that we've made thus far. And pardon my reading from these three and a half pages, but we'll do this for posterity. And just to give an update for those who haven't attended the meeting for this evening, we'll go through each of the goals. Policy and board knowledge base. We had a goal of adopting a code of ethics for board members and all district personnel and either have, adopt a policy and amend in accordance with Erie and Bosse's Policy Services recommendations. The board reviewed policy 6110, the code of ethics for board members and all district personnel, and this new policy was adopted on February 6th, 2017. We were looking to adopt the policy on water testing for lead in all school buildings and implement water testing in all of our buildings. An updated policy, 5630, was adopted on January 9th. Initial testing was performed in September and October and reported to parents, employees, NICE Ed, and the Department of Health as results were received, along with the information being posted and updated on the district's website. Remediation and further testing has been performed throughout the year and remediation efforts continue. We were looking to update our reserve fund policy and improve the Lancaster Central School District Reserve and Fund Balance Plan A, or Plan. A work session on the reserve funds and the policies and plan will be held this summer, tenatively on July 31st, and we'll vote on that for this evening, where we can lay everything out as far as how we use our reserve funds and then subsequent action will be taken. We were hoping to update the community on the present state of NICE Ed Reform Agenda. For example, the standards, assessments, the APR, student achievement results. And the update is that the LCS, LCSD APR Plan was submitted to NICE Ed in July of 2016 with full approval granted. Presentations have been made to the board on new learning standards in October, assessment overview in December, assessments in student achievement, including student achievement results in February. My wife is falling asleep, I think. Trying to liven it up a little bit. This is impressive stuff, if you're really listening, you know, it's kind of trying to be not monotone. But create an alternative plan to meet the requirement of Board of Education to visit each school. And the board entertained and discussed ideas and suggestions at the retreat, some of which actually violated our Board of Education policy. So at this time, the board is going to continue to visit each school, as it has for decades, and attempt to have as many meetings as possible in Central Avenue, where the organization of this room is most conducive to discussion and for taping for the website and for cable television. And then that experiment for this evening of trying presentations in the corresponding location worked well, especially with drive-board meetings, you need to get up and move around a little bit so you don't fall asleep. Student achievement. Support, increase student achievement and successes for all students pre-K through 12, including the expansion of opportunities in STEM studies, alternative programs and educational technology. This is of course an ongoing effort. Math, English, social studies and science curriculum alignment progressed throughout the year, focusing particularly between William Street and the middle school. William Street Technology Instruction expanded to grade four with focus on four to six on the new science standards. Project Lead the Way Gateway Programming offers middle school students engineering design and robotic experience. Expectations for the continued growth of enrollment in William Street and middle school, accelerated classes in math and science have resulted in more students taking Algebra I and Living Environment. This provides opportunities for an increasing number of students to take advanced coursework in math, science, technology at the high school. The high school science department has realigned its assessments and curriculum as well as course offerings, expanding to include AP Environmental Science and AP Computer Science A and AP Computer Science Principles. We will offer the Project Lead the Way Biomedical Sciences Program beginning in the coming school year. LEAP continues to support students at the high school, graduating nine students in 2017. This program provides substantial support to students with chronic absenteeism, school anxiety and avoidance and family issues as well. We're looking to continue the exploration and establishment of an alternative school for Lancaster students. A series of meetings have been held with Dr. Kufel, Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Marchioli and Mr. Krasinski, chaired by Dr. Perini. The purpose of these meetings was to establish criteria for the consideration, including clientele, students, staffing, transportation and structure of the day or program. Additionally, a proposal was made to Our Lady of Pompeii for use of classroom space and they have responded to the proposal with cost estimates. An additional meeting was held, which included an LCTA member and special education teacher and two student support staff members, who provided addition, added considerations for the group. Staffing would be drawn from existing personnel and expenses will be offset with the return of students from off-site placements. A preliminary budget is being developed at this time, subject to change based on the emerging design of this program, and this is of course an ongoing effort. We were looking to review the organization of schools and boundaries. Enrollment continues to be monitored. Classroom space at Hillview and Sholi is at maximum capacity with additional kindergarten growth. A meeting was held with Mr. Fishon, a code enforcement officer for the town of Lancaster, reviewing emerging developments in the town. Continuing discussions are taking place with district and building administrators, securing suggestions moving forward to accurately inform the Board of Education. If the Board of Education is interested in moving forward with this dialogue, it has been Dr. Valley's recommendation, I think continues to be, that we pursue outside guidance and counsel at this time in terms of how we would tackle these ever-evolving issues. In finance and operations, a review, we were to review the impact of the upcoming minimum wage increases and implement a plan that charts, charters of course, for the district in the coming years. The minimum wage increases and the impact of the district's wage rates was presented at our February 27th budget work session. Discussion was held about incrementally increasing the substitute. 27th Budget Work Session. Discussion was held about incrementally increasing the substitute support staff wages over the course of the next five years to remain the same proportion above the minimum wage. The Board adopted the wage rates for the 1718 school year at the meeting on June 5. Move Phase Five and Six of the $57.3 million bond issue forward from planning to, and design to start of construction. Our site work for Phase Five, the Walden Bus Garage, has begun, and construction will continue to steadily progress over the next 18 months. Most of Phase Six, which is Hillview and the High School, is underway and will be near completion at the start of the 1718 school year. At Hillview, this includes building condition survey work, the library, art room, nurse's office remodel, and the new playground. At the high school, the work includes building condition survey work, the track replacement, and the pool roof replacement. The Java Gym portion of Phase Six continues to sit at NICE Ed awaiting approval. Several meetings with principals and essential personnel regarding designs and specifications for the Phase Six through Phase Eight scopes have been held. Bi-weekly OACM meetings and daily communication with the architects and construction managers occur. A bond anticipation note has been sold for $33.9 million in costs for the project, which has been spent to date and will be spent over the next fiscal year. We were looking to create and implement a NYSC, New York State Office of, what's that, NYSO, SC? State Controllers, Financial Condition Reports, too many acronyms. Corrective Action Plan. We should have parentheses and spell those. Wake up. What is this one? Yes, thank you, Jamie. Thank you. The Corrective Action Plan was created and approved by the Audit Committee and Board of Education on October 3 meeting. Action One was done with the 1718 budget process, and will continue to be done annually. Action Two is a work in progress and will be, will be completed after the work session on the Reserve Funds is held. Action Number Three will occur after the fiscal year end, June 30th, and will continue to be done annually. Action Four will be done after the fiscal year end, June 30th, and will continue to be done annually. And Action Five is a work in progress and will be completed after the work session on the Reserve Funds is held as well. Support and monitor the implementation of the Approved Smart Schools Bond Act Plan. That's device purchasing and implementation, continuing professional development, preliminary planning for UPK facilities, and exploration of next-generation technology applications. The Smart Schools Bond, or Plan for Lancaster is specific regarding a technology that can be purchased, and that technology is Chromebooks. Over the course of the year, we have purchased 1,404 Chromebooks with Smart Schools monies, with district technology funds, as well as New York State textbook monies, which are available for student technology. We have also purchased 1,044 tablets, and they have primarily, are primarily being used by primary students, as well as for science applications at William Street, the Middle School, and the High School. As a district, we currently have 5,227 Chromebooks and tablets. This brings us to full saturation, meaning that there are sufficient devices for every student in the district to utilize, which I think is very impressive. We also have used technology funds to transition from inter-write boards to presentation TV monitor devices. This configuration interfaces effectively with Chromebooks and behaves well in emerging technology applications. So approximately 15 classrooms in the district, as well as the Middle School Library, have been transformed into inspired learning spaces with emergent technology applications available for students. Teachers have applied for these spaces and are transforming their practice through technology. Remaining district technology monies funded the introduction of Z-Space, a 3D educational application used for next-generation STEM education from K through 12. Stations for this program will be piloted at Como Park, and at the Middle School and High School, with expansion expected. Professional development has been ongoing, with tech mentors constructing, or conducting summer and year, school year workshops, as well as push-in support to the buildings. Student experts have been providing support for high school teachers as they navigate through the, the new technology, and their support will expand next year to include the support of the teachers and other buildings in the district. The district has submitted the expenses incurred thus far to NICE Ed for reimbursement and awaits payment. Initial planning meetings have been held regarding the potential locations for the UPK additions to the Central Avenue Elementary Building. A site survey, soil conditions, is being performed by an outside agency. UPK addition remains in the initial planning stage. And then lastly, health and safety. Excuse me one second. We look to develop an, an implementation plan for Education Law 87.01, at a requirement of four annual lockdown drills at each building. An updated Policy 5683 was adopted on January 9, 2017, addressing these changes. Not much else is needed to be changed, as each of our buildings has been performing lockdown drills in accordance with the district-wide and building-level safety plans prior to this school year. Each of the buildings completed this requirement with ease, and some were able to incorporate law enforcement and emergency management officials for input, and so their squad could protect themselves. We also look to support and monitor the district's efforts to create a written workplace safety plan and protocols, and using resources from the district's safety group and workers' compensation insurance. The district has put together quite an extensive manual to satisfy the Code Rule 59 requirement, and to put into use with our employees for safety, improve safety. After a review by various district stakeholders and a representative from the district's workers' compensation insurance provider, the report is finalized. It has been posted to the district's website under the staff portal, and employees will have to annually acknowledge that they have to, to access it and understand its contents. Training on various aspects of the plan will start this summer with specific employee groups and continue throughout the school year, and be ongoing in future years. And lastly, review and update the Lancaster Central School District Alogy Policy and administrative regulations to improve, improve safety for all students. And that allergy plan was presented to the Board on November 7th of 2016, Policy Number 7521. Students with serious and/or life-threatening mental conditions is scheduled for final approval at tonight's meeting. So that's the update on our, our Board Goals, and we're going to have a little bit different framework in terms of our goals this year. We're going to try to have Board Goals and then District Goals, so we can separate the work of the two different entities, but both will continue to support one another in the district. Okay, next, I'd like to move on to a service award. Mrs. Marie McKay is retiring from our Board after 15 years of service. I was also able to attend the Erie County Association of School Boards Dinner, where they acknowledge people for their years of service, and Mrs. McKay was a well-deserving recipient. So I'd just like to say, just my little, one half a page spiel here. I think I summed it up in just my couple of sentences. Marie, I think you're a passionate representative of the children and families of the Lancaster Central School District. You are someone that I have grown to trust and admire, and someone who has furthered our district with your dedication and your service, and I can guarantee you will not be forgotten. So I wish you happy years of not having to come to school board meetings, if you don't like to, but you are always welcome, and your input will always be valued. So congratulations. And I know that Mrs. McKay would like to say a couple of words, but we're, we're going to wait till the end for that. Okay. Okay, 9.0 Superintendent's Administrative Report, Dr. Valley.
I'll keep it short and sweet, because as we roll along here, I keep on checking things off that have been mentioned, but that's all right. I only have two things left on my list. I'll add one here, but National Honor Society was held in the courtyard last week, and it was nice to see and experience. You know, you go to those events, and you realize something that my good friend and mentor, Mr. Mishka, used to say all the time, and that is that this place has something for everyone, you know, and it's nice to see the artsy creative people in their niche, with, with their friends and their family supporting them and everything else. There are clubs and opportunities in this place, you got to go after them and get them, but they exist. And it was really truly awesome to be a part of that. I've been there every single year, and it's always a pleasure. And then the only other thing not mentioned, Mr. Wild's here, and I know he wants to, not now, but he's brought to my attention that Mr. Carriero, Coach C, was chosen for the Boys Track and Field Coach of the Year. He's a great man and a great person, and it's nice to see him get that credit and that accolade, so congratulations to him. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. 10.0 Old Business. Does anyone from the Board have any old business they'd like to discuss? 11.0 New Business. 11.1 Personnel Items. 11.1.1. Could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes?
No.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.1 is a tenure recommendation for a teach, an art teacher from high school. Now, we will be voting on her tenure this evening, and then she will receive tenure in September, after she works one more day. Could I have a motion to accept the tenure recommendation?
No.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.2 Education Items. 11.2.1 is Committee on Special Educations Report. Could I have a motion to accept that?
No.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.2. Could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Educations Report?
No.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.0 is...
Can we give us an opportunity to answer?
Oh, yep, sorry. Go right ahead. Well, I mean, my, my initial thinking is, I mean, I, I do enjoy having some information about the Academy of Finance that you, that you share with us. The first step in that process, I would think, especially as an educator, would be that we would have to survey those groups involved and gauge their interest. Because I, I did attend, I actually presented at the Leadership Academy last year, and I enjoyed it thoroughly, but when I'm there, changes the meeting, right, because there's a board member at the meeting. And that, if that's...
That way, though, like, and they are so appreciative of...
Sure, and that's, and that's, that's why I think it would be important for us to really try to get a genuine feedback in terms of, and then it would, of course, be the, the question of, you know, equity and distribution of our time. So I would love to, my daughter's going to be in the Leadership Academy, I would love to be, have some involvement there, if Mr. Skouran and the other members of Leadership Academy would welcome that. But will there be someone to represent the Board at every...
It's a thought. I know that they're very proud of what they do, and they want to show us that. And, and I think it's good for us to be involved, not just that banquet and the stadiums and the quays, and the actual academic behind it. And, I don't know, it was just a thought, when, when someone had brought up, you know, go to that, and not, what about the other academy, even? Academy of Finance needs to get a lot of, you know, attention, and I think they're all so awesome, that I was like, it's something I'd like us to look at. It's entertaining. I know we can't do this night, oh, you're, you're going to go here, but maybe do, like, you set a survey, or some business, and which one about you can do, and what time are they leaving?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can, yeah, I mean, and it, it is a good thought. I mean, I'd like to know more. I'd like to be, not privy to more, but a cheerleader for more things.
Exactly.
And so maybe, so maybe we do something similar to a rotation, where we might not, you know, you might not be attached to a certain group, and, and I might not be, but we sign up for meetings that they invite us to. Again, I mean, I, I am of the opinion, I like to, you know, cheer from the stands and support everything that we do, and not insert myself anywhere where I'm not welcomed or appreciated. So I think we gauge that, that enthusiasm towards this wonderful Board of Education, and see how much they would welcome us into their meetings, and then we take it from there. But I think that's a, I think it's a good idea.
Maybe, and find out that it's there.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
I'll cheer you in.
Yeah, I know you will. I, I think Mr. Jackson is of the, the cheerleading theme as right, as well, right, Mr. Jackson? So I, I would assume you're...
No.
Okay, so we'll move on to 12.0 Business and Financial Items. 12.1. Could I have a motion to accept the financial items?
No move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.2 is Policy Adoption 7521, the Students with Life-Threatening Health Conditions. Could I have a motion to accept the policy?
No move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.3 is the second policy reading for 6470, Acceptable Use. 12.4 is the second policy reading for 8271, Children's Internet Protection Act, our Internet Content Filter and Safety, Safety Policy. Those are from information only, and will be voted on in future meetings. 12.5 is a bid award for tires. Could I have a motion to accept the bid award?
No.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.6 is our Surplus Buses and authorized, Authorization of Auction. Could I have a motion to accept that?
No.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.7 is our Surplus Library Book Report. Could I have a motion to accept that?
No.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. The contracts, I think Mrs. Christopher was going to suggest that I lump these together, which I was thinking as well. Yep, so 12.8, Homestead Center for Site, 12.9, Ellen Cool, 12.10, our contract with the YMCA, IBC Engineering, CJ Brown is Contract 1212. 1213 is a contract with Buffalo Hearing and Speech, 14 is Buffalo Hearing and Speech Therapy, and 1215 and 16 are contract extensions for summer school transport and school year transportation. Could I have a motion to accept those contracts?
No.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Thank you. 12.17, the EBALR, our transfers. Could I have a motion to accept that report?
No move. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.18, BAN Sale Results. Could I have a motion to accept that report?
No. Second.
Oh, yep, yep, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. That's for information only. 12.19, our annual organizational meeting, the date, we're going to vote to change to 7/13, if that would be okay with everyone, from 7/10?
Thank you.
Could I have a motion to accept that change?
No.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. So that organizational meeting will be changed to July 13th, and that will be our next meeting. 12.20 is the 1718 Board Meeting Dates, that calendar. Could I have a motion to accept that calendar as it's written?
No.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. And then 12.21, that's for information only. There were a couple Saturdays that were floated out there in September for Board of Education Retreat Dates, so if members of the Board could look at those and check their calendars, and we'll vote on one of those, or finalize one of those at a future meeting.
9/16.
Yeah.
Are we picking one right now?
We don't have to pick one right now. Should we?
Yeah.
We should.
It's like a favorite, it's the 23rd.
You know what I'm saying?
On the first day?
9th, September 9th. Yeah, that is the first, the 9th is the first Saturday after...
11th.
What, 15th?
11th.
Anything ringing about?
9/9/17. They work for me.
Which one is that?
Number 9.
September 9th.
September 9th? Okay.
I'm looking.
July 13th. Is a location determined or no?
I think we're looking at some locations, right? But we haven't...
Yeah, something.
Yeah, we definitely...
It's going to be 8:00 AM again? You go ahead, we'll be there. Start it up. 8:00 AM, okay.
So let's put September 9th out. You've got a date.
I come up with the time and the location.
Yeah.
We came up with it.
Yeah, subsequent.
Yeah. I would want to tell you. But if we took their whole Saturday, just they were off, I think, for a while.
That's right.
So start early, and maybe we can get out of there.
We'll see. We'll see how, we'll see what availability shakes out.
Six o'clock and start, it gets out all of the... Right, as I said, you can start, and then we can be there.
Okay, so we'll put in motion for July 9th, and we'll let the board members know of the locations and the times. Okay. September. Isn't that what I said? Did I say July? September. Okay, 13.0 is, what? Oh, I'm sorry. 13, but we have no one, we have no one to speak tonight, so I was just going to announce that no one was going to speak, so you have all the time that you'd like.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Mrs. McKay?
Well, I originally had 40 pages, but I cut it down after Patrick's little speech about our goals. I figured I'd keep it simple and sweet. Friends, I want to thank everyone for an incredible 15 years. Many people have said to me that serving on the Board of Education is a thankless job. I have to say that serving on the Board has been the most rewarding experience of my public career. The progress made educationally at Lancaster makes me extremely proud. During my first term on the Board, Lancaster ranked number 26 according to Business First. During my tenure on the Board, we have steadily improved the educational experience of the Lancaster student body, and Lancaster has reached number 8. This accomplishment is remarkable, especially when considering, in conjunction, Lancaster ranking as the number-one school for the educational cost efficiency, and number 2 for administrative efficiency. The combination of prudent spending and combined with an enhanced educational experience is an accomplishment that myself, the Board, the administrators, the school personnel, and the teachers in the community can be very proud of. I, for one, am very pleased to have been part of this marvelous trend. Thank you. I like the feedback. I want to thank a number of people who have been, who have been my mentors in partner number 1. I want to thank Georgette Pelletier, as she was the individual, the individual that convinced me to run for the Board. If not for her influence, I would not have had this incredible experience. I want to thank the past superintendents, which I, which I had the honor of working with, Dr. Joe Girardi and Ed Mishka. Their friendship and their guidance made this experience a true joy. I want to thank all of the teachers and administration for their partnership through the years. Together, the team has established a shining example of working closely together towards a common goal. The success of the students of the Lancaster School District can accomplish, accomplish, we have accomplished great things over the last 15 years, and I am grateful to each of you. To my fellow board members, I wish to congratulate the entire group for your professionalism in the face of some of the very trying times. Although we may disagree on certain subjects, the courage to raise controversy issues increased the awareness of your fellow board members, and very important, the community. To Glenn Jackson, I am, I am excited that you are assuming my spot on the Board. I look forward to your contribution. Finally, to my core supporters over the last few years, I want to extend my undying gratitude to Patrick Utech and Bill Gallagher. I appreciate you continuing your support during the ups and downs and keeping me focused on doing the right thing for those who, who we were elected to serve. To Kenny, Wendy, and Kim, you were a role model during our times together on the Board, and I need you to know how much I appreciate our partnership. To Lee, you have been a close friend and a father to me and mentored me. You can, you can never understand how much I appreciate your support throughout these 15 years. To Mike Valley, it has been my sincere pleasure to work with you through your, through your development at Lancaster and hiring as a superintendent. Your contributions to the district have been immeasurable. I wish you to continue the success as the leader of an incredible team. And finally, but most important, thank you to the public for the trust you showed me through these five terms on the Board. I am so honored that you entrust your children and your school district to my hands, and I am humbled by your support. It is my sincere wish that the new Board can work together and with the community to build on success we have achieved. I'd also like to thank my husband, my son Christopher, my son Andrew. Andrew, I'm done. You don't have to listen to this anymore. Andrew kept asking me throughout the year, "How many more days, Mom?" And I said, "It's almost over with, honey." And he says, "How many more days?" He goes, "I can't wait." It's been a pleasure, it's been, it's been a pleasure serving everybody here in the community, but I really sincerely like to thank my family, because without them, I would not have been able to do this. I would also like to thank Sandy for the many times that we spoke, and many times you kept me intact and kept me, you know, focused and, and thinking that it's about the kids and not to worry about how others felt. So I thank you very much, and I will miss you, and I'll miss our coffee calls in the morning. So thank you very much. It's been an honor, and I hope that others can serve the way I have and to care about the children the way I have. I'm very proud, and I'm very honored. Thank you very much.
15.0 is a work session to discuss our board and committee positions for the upcoming year. We have several committees and teams that board members serve on, and we'll go through each of them one at a time. The Delegate Assembly, and each of the, each of the either groups or teams meet a couple times a year, and it's a sort of a liaison to those groups overseeing the management of their duties. So the Delegate Assembly is a policymaking body of the Association. Last year, it was Mrs. Metz, who was an alternate.
It has to be.
It has to be. Well, it's, there are, it usually, the two assignments that you're usually assigned are the Delegate Assembly and then the Voting Delegate at the School Board Convention. So...
We don't have a microphone.
So we're going to...
I'll speak on his behalf. You'll do it.
The Voting Delegate is, I think I talked...
You're going to want it.
We'll pencil you into those two assignments, and then we're...
We're talking.
We'll get the pen out a little bit later, but... Okay, moving on to the Budget and Finance Team. That was Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Sage.
How about the backup?
Oh, um, yeah. Mrs. Metz, would you like to...
How about the backup?
For both of them?
Yeah.
For the Delegate Assembly and for...
Yeah.
And how about the Budget and Finance Team? Mr. Gallagher was last year, and Mr. Sage was the backup. If anyone would like to be on the Budget and Finance Team?
I don't mind staying on that. I can stand there if anyone really wants it.
Mr. Gallagher?
I know you had a, you had a good moment there.
And...
No, you're not, you're not, you won't try to make yourself, but you can switch up at any time, because you are a...
And, and you could also, if you'd like a limited role of just the ones that we've assigned to you, that's fine as well. I mean... Now you're in trouble. Brenda will take that one.
Oh, that was a sad move, Chris.
She'll be ready. Don't worry about her.
So, so Mr. Gallagher is willing to...
I'll stay on the Budget and Finance Team.
And I'll do, I'll be the alternate for that. The Legislative Team, Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Dapczynski. Okay? Mrs. Dapczynski?
If anyone else wants to, you didn't have to. You can do, or send them up, good. More than America, somebody's going to go to the capital.
As I said before, I think you're doing a fantastic job with that.
Yeah, I know. I got this.
Put me in as tentative. You don't get to use that a lot back there, is it? So moved. So, the NISBA Liaison, would you like to continue that, Mrs. Christopher?
Yeah, of course. You can go ahead.
Okay. And then the district committees, we have the Audit Committee, which was Mrs. Dapczynski, Mr. Gallagher, and Mr. Sage. Each of you'd like to re-up on those?
I'd like to stop on...
And do we, do we have to have three on there, or do we need just two? Just two?
I think we need three, because in case we have anything that needs to happen, we need to... I'll definitely stay on, because I like working with this.
I can, I can step in as well.
Here's where you guys can start, isn't that yours?
No, that's not, I tried to stop you before we did that. So I would love to stay on the committee, because of the work that is still...
Watch them? Yeah.
Yeah. You want to be on the Audit Committee? So that makes five? No, that's, you're only three. Yeah, we didn't put you on Budget and Finance. Keep going. Okay, so Mr. Gallagher on the Audit Committee. The Food Service Committee, I'd like to be on that one, actually. Could I? Food Service? And then last time, it was Mrs. McKay and Mr. Sage. Mr. Sage?
I'd like to stay on.
Okay. So I guess Mr. Sage wants to be on Building Use, Health Insurance, and District-wide Health and Safety. Okay, so for that one, we have myself and Mrs. Metz, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Building Use Committee is Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Metz.
Yeah, that was tough on me. Yes, but when I...
You want to stay on that one?
I'll take that one.
So who's, who is that? Mrs. Metz and Mrs. Christopher, okay. And then the Health Insurance Committee was Mrs. Kay and Mr. Sage. Mrs. Kay?
I'd like to stay on.
Anyone else want to be on the Health Insurance Committee?
I'm on that one.
Mr. Gallagher? And then we have a new one this year, the District-wide Health and Safety Committee.
I want to stay on.
So how many?
Everybody wants a new one.
So how, how many do we need for that one?
We need one.
Just one?
Yeah. We need to do one in the backup. It's a very big committee, so we really... So how do we decide? Okay, can you do it?
I'm more than willing to bow out. I can do it in a future year.
So Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Dapczynski is the backup. Okay?
You didn't intend to put one to 8:30.
It'll be up at 3:30.
Be careful here.
Yeah.
Which ones do you have me on for?
I have you, Food Service.
Food Service?
And...
Is that it?
Oh, and backup for Budget and Finance.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. Backup for Budget and Finance.
Okay, that's good. Okay, thank you for volunteering, everyone. It's, it's an extra meeting to go to, and it's part of Board Service, but it's, it helps keep us informed, and we report back to the Board. So again, thank you for your commitment and your time. So that's it for the committee and board positions. 16.0 for adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Our next meeting is Thursday, July 13th, our organizational meeting at Central Avenue Building at 7:00 PM, with our regular session immediately to follow.
What's it?
No, next meeting. Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming. We're adjourned.